Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I am thrilled that we have three very special candidates running for office who want to serve our community and happy to be able to showcase them tonight and learn more about them and where they stand and what their goals are for our city, what their vision is for our city and how we can move forward together. So, very excited about that. Before we get into the comments and Q and A tonight, just a couple of notes about the chamber and this particular program, we will be recording. It also is live streaming on our Facebook and on River City TV. So, thanks to Mark Aaron for supporting us in that. This webinar will be housed on the chamber website. So, if you are interested in going back and watching it, if you have a colleague or a friend who would like to watch it, you'll be able to do that through the chamber website. And Rachel, my slides will not advance, so I'm not going to fight with technology this evening. I would like to just, normally, we like to thank our innovation partners. Our innovation partners are those chamber members who invest in the chamber's mission. I would encourage you to read our newsletters to see who they are. Go on our website. We're very grateful to their investment and contributions in the mission of the chamber, one of which, of course, is legislative advocacy, which is why we're so excited to be with you tonight. Our candidates tonight and our moderator is Hunter Burns, who is a chamber board member and chairs our legislative committee. Hunter will talk more about the format. Candidates, so you are aware, we, you know, but we are recording and I will be keeping time on your responses this evening so that we can get through as many questions as possible. Thank you so much for being here, candidates. Thank you so much for being here, attendees. And with that, Hunter, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Alexis. To give her by the ground rules for tonight, we have five questions that have already been submitted from the legislative committee, which all of the candidates will have an opportunity to respond to. We will begin by going in alphabetical order, starting with Ms. Carter and then Mr. Hood and then Mr. Shanks on the first question, and then we'll go down. So, Mr. Hood, you'll be answering first on the second question and so forth. Each candidate will have up to three minutes to respond to each question. We realize that's not a lot of time, but we have a lot of information and we have a lot of folks that might have different interests. So, we're going to try to hit a wide variety of questioning. We also have a list of questions that have been submitted by the public. If we have time after the five preset questions, then we will go through some of those questions and I will announce who will be responding first and so forth. I first wanted to say thank you very much to Katrina, Brian and Fred for being here tonight. We wish you all well and we're glad to have three qualified candidates for our one position on city council. And remind all the voters that are out there, the election, you can vote early now, but it, actual election day is on November 3rd. And so, without any further ado, I will begin, Katrina, with you first, and it will be the same question for all three of you, so listen closely, but I will, I will repeat it if you need me to. So, Katrina, the first question for you is, what are your qualifications for the Danville City Council and why do you feel you are the most qualified candidate to carry out the duties and responsibilities of the office? Katrina, it's yours. And I'll remind all of you, try to unmute after I ask you the question. I'm sure I'll have to remind you at some point, but Ms. Carter, it's up to you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am so grateful to be here tonight. I am Katrina Carter and I am running to be your next Danville City Councilwoman. I've been a resident of Danville for more than 25 years. Need a plug. I've been a resident for more than 25 years and my battery is acting up. It's in my work bag. I'm working in various capacities throughout the city, including employment services, specialist at Danville Social Services. I've been the director of career services at Avery University, the senior manager at the Virginia Employment Commission, and I currently serve as president and CEO at Tri-County Community Action Agency. At Tri-County Community Action Agency, we cover programs such as Head Start, Healthy Families, Domestic Violence Program. We run a shelter. We do emergency food and shelter. We have a weatherization program. We do private jobs. We do mentoring. Through all of these different programs, I have exceptional community knowledge and service, and I know that I will be a great addition to city council. So, I talked about a lot of my qualifications, but let me tell you why those qualifications matter. Because of all of the different things that I have done throughout this city, those qualifications turn into impact and outcomes. I know how to look at a budget and know whether it's going to be successful and sustainable for what we need in the city. And so, we're looking at the difference of whether we want to bring low minimum paying, minimum wage paying jobs to the city, or do we want sustainable jobs, quality jobs that are going to turn into livelihoods for our community, making our community overall more sustainable. So, I bring all of these different qualifications to city council and therefore, I hope to be your next Danville City Councilwoman. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. We will now turn to Brian Hood. Mr. Hood, I will repeat the question if you need to, need me to, but if not, I'll let you answer.
First of all, thanks to the chambers for hosting this debate. I'm humbled to be here and to be, and attempt to become your next Danville City Councilman. I love Danville and I love the people. I think that's a main qualification. Independently, I've been able to reach across tables, reach across rooms, be in areas that's, that's normally not sustainable for me to be in, but as a people person, I'm able to get to it. I'm a pragmatic problem solver. I believe in common sense solutions. I will work for the betterment of the people. I'm accessible. I'm easy to find. I listen. I know the city and its citizens have been reached, who needs to be reached, and I can be that guy to reach them. I have an innovative perspective of bringing ideas to the city. City council is already there with already members that are already on board. I would like to be one to bring that different platform and those different angles that are needed, and that's why I feel like I can be your next Danville City Councilman.
Thanks, Brian. Fred Shanks will be next. Mr. Shanks, I'll repeat the question if you need me to, but if not, I'll let you answer.
That's okay. I'll, I'll go ahead and answer. Thank you. I'd like to thank the chamber, the Chamber of Commerce for having this forum this evening. I appreciate the invitation. Again, my name is Fred Shanks, and what I'd like to do is give you a little bit of my background before it leads into my qualifications. I am a licensed, is both a professional civil engineer and licensed land surveyor. After graduating from Virginia Tech, I worked with two different engineering firms, one in Richmond and one in Roanoke. And in 1987 in Roanoke, I founded Shanks Associates, an engineering and surveying firm. In 1991, I opened a Danville office and in 1998 acquired two surveying firms in Martinsville. My, I moved back here to Danville in 1993. In '96, city council appointed me to serve on the city planning commission. I served there for 12 years until the December of 2007. I served as chairman of planning commission five times and during the, also served as chairman during the rewrite of 2000 zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance and comprehensive plan. As a small engineering firm, I have represented local business clients for 33 years and I've worked with city council. And I was first elected in 2008 and re-elected in '12 and '16. During that time, I served on the following boards and commissions. I served on Danville RIFA, Danville, Pennsylvania County RIFA. I was served chairman and vice chairman of that at various times. Two years on the newly created Stanton River RIFA, 12 years on the Danville Metropolitan Planning Organization and four years with the West Pymott Planning District. Eleven years with the Utility Commission. I believe this experience and this knowledge gained through those years of service through the city, almost 24, well, 12, 24 years of service to the city, gave me a great deal of qualifications to be on city council. Also, a small business owner for 33 years and, like I said, served with the city for 24 years. So, I feel like those give me some qualifications to sit at one of the desk, one of the chairs on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shanks. Mr. Hood, the next question you'll begin with is, what do you believe is the single most important issue facing our region? And if elected, what will you do to address the issue? What will be your other priorities?
Okay, if you had asked me that in January, I probably would have had a different answer for you, but right now it's COVID-19. The effect that it has on our citizens and businesses has caused us to dramatically change our decisions on our everyday living and also how we do business. If elected, I would address this issue by working with the city manager, economic development about small business options. Small businesses are a backbone to our economy. I would make certain that our citizens are safe and have access to resources for everyday living by researching other cities similar to ours to see what has worked to keep them safe and what support they have for their small businesses. What will be my other top priority would be equal opportunity for our citizens, public safety, which to me is the most fundamental responsibility of local government and supporting our school system so our next generation has opportunities to succeed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shanks?
Yes, thank you. I believe the single most important issue facing the city of Danville is a successful economic development program. And recruitment of a diversified business inventory with a wide range of skill sets and employment opportunities. A successful economic development program would provide needed foundation to address many of the most prominent challenges that our city faces today. Such as improvement of our school system, further reduction of crime, increases in educational attainment and repopulation of the city public schools. To achieve these objectives, I will continue to support and promote retention of existing businesses, recruitment of game-changing industrial clients to the Southern Virginia Mega Park, Mega Site, Berry Hill, which is jointly owned facility with the Pittsburgh County, recruitment of industrial and manufacturing clients to other regional industrial parks owned by the Danville, Pittsburgh County Regional Industrial Facility Authority and the Sandy River, the newly formed Sandy River Regional Industrial Facility Authority. And recruitment of industrial and manufacturing clients to city-owned industrial sites. Continuing regional cooperation efforts by assisting Pittsburgh County in recruiting industrial and manufacturing clients in Pittsburgh-owned sites. Now, if the casino referendum is passed by the citizens of Danville, we need to continue to provide emphasis for our traditional economic goals and objectives while facilitating the redevelopment of newly nearby adjacent properties to this casino complex, as well as strategic redevelopment of southern commercial, some of the southern commercial zones that line the streets out to Memorial Drive and West Main Street out to the North Carolina interchange. Continue emphasis on strategic plan for interconnectivity of existing commercial zones, to the school for the area, and then support appropriate infrastructure improvements in operation of Danville Public Schools by creating new revenue streams and benchmarks for expectations with the ultimate goal of making Danville Public Schools a regional school system of choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carter, make sure you unmute.
That's my goal for this year is to make sure that I'm not muted when I speak on Zoom. So, COVID-19 definitely has impacted our small businesses to the point that many are teetering on the brink right now. And so, small business owners add diversity to the tax base for the city. This is very important as we move forward. Small businesses also add population stability and vitality. These businesses often employ generations from the same family. We need that stability in our community. And so, the city is doing some great things and expanding on some of those will help our small businesses sustain this storm. Because of this, it's necessary for us as a city to embrace our small businesses, find out what the needs are that are going to make sure that these businesses don't disappear. They are the fabric of our community. They are our friends. They are our neighbors. The city's small businesses are as varied as its people. Therefore, when seeking solutions, it will not be one size fits all. We have to promote policies that help create a culture of entrepreneurship. Entrepreneurship is very important. It happens every day in our communities. In our rural community, we have new entrepreneurs popping up every day. We've got to understand that that is very important as a city. There are people from all different demographics, sectors and geographies that are entrepreneurs in our city. So, we have to strengthen access to Danville's current financing options for small businesses and entrepreneurs. We have to invite business owners into the conversation, allow them to help build the process that seems so evasive to too many of our small businesses. And so, when we're moving forward, we have to make sure that when we do economic development, that we don't forget our small businesses. We never want to have a Danville where all of our balls are in one basket ever again because we've learned from that and we've come back from that and we don't want to go back. And so, other priorities, in order for business to be strong here, we have to have a strong educational foundation. And that has to be, attention has to be given from council to the educational system in Danville. We were great at one time and we can get there again. And so, those are some of the things that I would look at on council.
Perfect timing. Thank you very much, Katrina. Mr. Shanks, you'll begin with the next question, which is, in the present climate, and it's a long question, so I apologize for it. In the present climate of fewer resources from the federal and state government and emphasis on scrutinizing spending, what priorities should be maintained in the city's budget? How do you propose those priorities be funded? And are there areas in the current budget that you believe should be reduced or eliminated?
Okay, thank you. The past several years, Danville City Council has adopted the following priorities: crime reduction, education and grow Danville. These adopted priorities have been used for the past four years in developing the city's budget and will again be used this coming year, I'm sure. There are many items that support these three objectives in the, in the current budget. It is imperative that we advocate for continued funding for police and other public safety personnel and assets from the Virginia General Assembly and the federal government. As we develop our upcoming budget, we must concentrate to avoid calls for new government programs and grants that could compete for those precious, for those precious dollars that already support the stated priorities. I believe over the past 12 years, we've kept our budget in tight, under watchful eyes. I feel like we've been, there've been a couple of tax increases in the last couple of years that we should have been able to avoid, but for the most part, I believe that we have done a good job of keeping our budget in lock. And so, as long as, as we don't introduce new programs, as long as we don't try to create programs that cost additional funds for the taxpayers with no, no return on investment, I think we're in good shape. So, I have, I have no preference for budget cuts at this point, but just have to wait and see what the manager introduces in the budget coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
The priorities, as Mr. Shanks has stated, for the city are crime reduction, education and to grow Danville. A city's responsibility is to their fire, their police, trash removal, roads, their employees. The city has a large employee base that they have to look for. And we just recently did the study on compensation for city employees. And so, we are at that point now where we have to look at what can we do around growing Danville? And how do we grow Danville and ensure that our budget stays solid? Well, I think that happens through partnerships. Danville doesn't have to always be the one to put the money on the table, but it's the innovation that we bring to the table that can help to bring new programs into the city. And so, I know I wrote, when I was at the Virginia Employment Commission, I wrote a grant in collaboration with the city and with Danville Community College. The Scale Up Grant was written, it's funded outside of the city, but it brings funds here to upscale our citizens and therefore make them more employable. And that's a program that has continued to thrive and continues to thrive. And so, I think it's through partnerships where we can get more things done in the city and not necessarily spend more money. And so, the priorities have already been laid out. I want to remind everyone, I will be one of nine individuals on this council, so I can't go in and change everything, but what I can do is make sure that the citizen's voice is heard every time I sit at council. And I'm going to make sure that I know, as I already do in the business that I already run, what a community needs and looking at the needs of that community and hearing from that community as to what their priorities are and making sure when decisions are made that the citizens are not left out of the room. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hood, it's your turn now.
All right. Public safety to me should be top priority in the city's budget. The safer the city, the stronger the city. Public safety should always be given the resources they need to do their, do a job well. Also, education is key component to Danville's future success. This must be made certain that Danville maintains funding for our schools at a level which allows our children to succeed. Council must ensure accountability with taxpayers' money as well. Economic development and funding for it must also be a high priority in the city's budget. With COVID-19, our path forward in regards to economic development is more important than ever. I also believe tourism is a part of economic development and we have significant opportunities to grow tourism in our city. When it comes to how do you propose these priorities to be funded? I did some research and studying and I found one common tactic is to give each department outside of their, of those that I stated, a target reduction. This way, they can share the budget equally, but it must be done accordingly. At this current moment as well, I don't see anything that maybe to need to be, to be reduced. One thing I would like to say is, as far as pushing of understanding of these things, the thing that I'm pushing for and the reason of people, not politics, is to get those involved who are regular taxpayer and citizens who may not catch it or may not understand the angle of the budget and how the city actually works. That's something that I'm studying real hard on now. So, when you get more people involved, it goes back to our say, the more, the more the city's involved, the stronger the city can be. And so, that's why we're working with people and not politics.
Thank you very much. Ms. Carter, we'll begin with you on this next question, which is, as we move into recovery, we know that many businesses have been devastated by COVID-19. How can city council better position the city to be more business-friendly to new and existing businesses? And how can the city be better prepared for future disasters, whether natural disaster or pandemic?
So, we have to focus, I think one thing that I really liked about the chamber and the Virginia chamber was when they talk about the six pillars of growing economies, investing in a well-trained talent supply line. In Danville, we're doing that and we have to continue to do that. Improving our infrastructure and capacity for business leadership. We need to be able to grow our infrastructure here in Danville. We know that COVID-19 has sent a lot of people home to work and some people on the outskirts are not getting Wi-Fi at home. They're having problems. Children are not able to get schooling because of Wi-Fi issues that they're having surrounding their, their homes. And so, we have to make sure that all citizens have access. Fostering a competitive pro-business climate. We want to be pro-business in Danville. We want businesses to look to Danville. Danville is making so many strides throughout, not just Virginia, but across the country because of what we've been through. After Dan River left, most people counted us out, but Danville showed how strong we were. We, and we have to be able to enable entrepreneurs. It is so important to the fabric of our community. We need to make sure that we are changing our perspective on prospective businesses. Community changes based on jobs that are, the choices based on jobs that are available. We don't want to build a, the new Danville economy on minimum wage jobs. We want quality jobs and we have to look to other industries to bring into Danville to complement what we already have here. And so, those are some of the ideas that I have around what we can do as we move into recovery.
Thank you, Katrina. Mr. Hood, it is your turn now.
Okay, what we must do, we must find ways to make business services and resources more accessible. Provide onsite business consulting, help businesses raise money, help small businesses win government contracts. Also, put in place business relief plans for the future and listen to the business owner's thoughts and feedback, which is very important. Now, how to better prepare for future disasters, natural or pandemic? I feel like we, we have to create a disaster response plan for businesses. We, we were able to learn a lot from Hurricane Michael, so moving forward in the city has become better prepared. Also, listen to our city manager and staff for they have been doing an exceptional job. In terms of economic development, I mean, yeah, development in Danville, what would be greatest opportunities and challenges over the next two, three years? What I see with that is, great opportunities, we have a great opportunity to show Danville as a tourist destination and all the jobs and revenue that come with it. We also have the opportunity to display our infrastructure and training programs in place to be able to attract better revenue generating businesses in Danville. Now, but when it comes to the challenges of the city is when, you know, that's when I really get deep in seeing because just being out in the city and talking amongst people, people are worried about possibly what's to come, but we also have to worry about sustaining popular, our population to keeping people here. We could have tourism here, but what local, local citizens, work enforcement and workplaces, will they be having to be able to sustain, you know, economical structure for themselves as well? Something else that we talked about out here in the streets, just talking to citizens is gentrification, the possibility of gentrification. So, if other businesses and companies come, per se, possibly that the casino come, the houses around in those neighborhoods, are they going to be, will, will the, the, the prices of them go up? Will they be, have better investment, better prepared, better improvement towards those houses or what have you? But gentrification is one thing that we're looking at and maintaining population can be a challenge for our city.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks, it's your turn. Fred, you need to unmute.
COVID-19 has a tremendous, has had a tremendous impact on many of our local businesses, as well as national and regional chains. Business in the hospitality and food industry have probably been one of the most impacted segments in our economy. The worldwide pandemic has left no nation and no business unimpacted. It's never been a case in modern history when the role of federal, state, history when the role of federal, state, and local governments have been challenged like they have with COVID-19. With exception, I believe the city has done a very good job of being out in front, or near the front, as federal and state aid trickled into the city's coffers. Responsibility of dealing with the impacts of such a pandemic and assisting those in need is largely the responsibility of the federal government, and to a lesser extent, the Commonwealth. It is the responsibility of the local government to identify the specific needs of the population and plan on coordinating and supporting much of the activities necessary for the public citizenry to be successful in dealing with the impacts of the pandemic. This planning and coordinating needs and coordinated needs and determine how best and most efficiently to financially mitigate these needs is the responsibility of locality. The assistance of the CARES Act and other federal assistance programs, city officials worked with, in conjunction with public health officials, nonprofits, foundations, and other levels of government to prepare and implement the best practices to assist our citizenry and to assist our economy in safely beginning to reopen. We continue to work in this recovery. I feel we can, we can reflect upon many of the actions this year that compose a best practices manual for natural disasters and pandemics. For the most part, the city has been right on target. By incorporating and providing solutions to those identified shortcomings, the ability to prepare a very, very fine manual to deal with future natural disasters and pandemics in the future. I truly believe the city has been out in front of this for the most part, and has done a very good job. We need to take the resources, the recollection of this past experience and put it, document it, and use it to write a future manual for situations like this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll begin with Mr. Hood. And all three of you have talked about the importance of economic development in the city of Danville. So in terms of economic development in the city of Danville, what will be the greatest opportunities and challenges over the next two to three years?
The greatest opportunities is, we again have a opportunity to have a tourist destination with possibilities of not simply the casino coming, the actual fact that you could see Danville spiraling from downtown is spiraling out. So you look at the River District. In the communities that I'm in, that I'm talking to, it's a lot of concern about where money and where things go to as opposed to what's inviting and what's not inviting. Economically, downtown with the River District, again, every city starts great with a good downtown. So we've been building downtown. So as it spirals out and keep going out, we're already in motion of building other businesses that are hitting the outskirts. What I want to make sure that goes on is, the outskirts feel involved with what opportunities are already here. Again, we just spoke about gentrification and people feeling black, or people feeling non-involved. The more there's involved, the stronger the city becomes. So the tourism opportunity, but also reaching a broad, broad angle of being able to bring more people in to not only the downtown area, but to show economic development growth throughout and show different support throughout the system, is great opportunities, I see, that we have come.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks?
Thank you. The greatest economic development opportunities for the city are Dan-
Fred, we can't hear you. I know you're not on mute, but something just went wrong with your microphone, I think.
Hello?
We hear you. Go ahead.
You do hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna restart the clock, or what's your preference here?
Yes.
Where you lost me?
Uh, we never heard you. So, yeah, just begin from the beginning, and we'll restart the clock.
All right, very good. Thank you. The greatest economic development opportunities for the city of Danville are successfully recruiting a very large tier-one manufacturing automotive industrial client to Berry Hill, or recruiting a tier-two, which is a supplier to Berry Hill, and the supplier will be for a tier-one somewhere at a park close by, or successfully recruiting one or more of our targeted industries to Danville Airside Industrial Park, or to Riffa's Ken Creek Center, or Cyber Park. These opportunities likely will likely be provided in the form of one or more of the targeted industries that our economic development department uses. That is precision metalworking, information technology, foods and beverages processing, pharma and life sciences, plastics and polymers, transportation and logistics. In terms of economic development opportunities within the city of Danville, in addition to those previously noted, the greatest opportunities lie with the citizens of Danville. Should the majority of citizens choose to approve a referendum to allow Caesars to locate their destination resort casino in a school field site, the financial impact on the local economy will be very impressive. A destination resort casino with related direct development by Caesars, meaning hotel, convention center, restaurants, music venues, and related, you know, campuses, campus facilities for casino, and also the numerous additional businesses that were involved from the private sector and in support of needed goods and services, are a tremendous opportunity for further economic development and new streams of revenue. The new streams should be treated as investments by the city, and they could aid in flattening tax rates for local citizens, improve funding for special public safety needs, assist with planning, implementing, monitoring, and strengthening the progress of Danville Public Schools, fund special Danville utility infrastructure needs, and turn our strategic project, other strategic projects that ensure a return on investment for the city of Danville's general fund. City council and staff have spent numerous hours over the past eighteen to twenty-four months meeting with legislators, lobbyists, casino operators, consultants, jockeying to put Danville in the absolute best position possible should the citizens choose to pass this referendum. The biggest challenge for the face, facing Danville is the inability to properly educate the students of Danville Public Schools. There are two issues that need to, we need to overcome. Danville must repopulate the school system, and we must become a school system of choice, as it was when I was a student at George Washington High School. It is important that Danville Public Schools become strong, a strong school system again, is important for our city, is important for our safety, and it is important for economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. And Ms. Carter?
There are so many great things happening in Danville right now. Our, last night, I had the opportunity on the community conversations that I've been holding throughout the campaign, and I will continue to hold after I'm elected. I had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Franks, the president of Averyt University, and Dr. Gil Powell, the president of Danville Community College. And we were talking about how these two universities really are economic drivers for our city. The programs that they provide through that, through their universities, the entrepreneurial program, the advanced manufacturing, there are so many great things. At the Institute of Advanced Learning and Research, where I'm a governor's appointee, they have so many new programs, the hemp program, they have a hemp conference at the institute that is sold out every time they have it. They are learning on different ways to utilize hemp in manufacturing. Right here in Danville, the Southern Virginia Regional Alliance, the entrepreneur ecosystem that's led by Jess Edwards, that is just starting up. It's a three-year venture that's going to talk directly to entrepreneurs in this city. And when I talk about entrepreneurs, a couple of weeks ago, I was at the Kidpreneur, with little children. I, it was a young guy that was six years old, running his little store. So we have the entrepreneur spirit here that is taking over this city. We need to embrace that. We need to make sure that everyone feels included. We need to, I also sit on the board for the ARC, where we work with individuals who are, have different abilities. This city oftentimes forgets about those who are different. We need to make sure that we are inclusive, that we're including all people at the table. Women included need to be at the table. So we have a lot of bright spots, but the strength, what strengthens our labor market and can help to breed job, quality jobs to this region are looking at those universities, how they are upskilling our citizens. We have so many opportunities, but we also face the challenge of our schools. We are, we were in a bind prior to COVID, and since COVID, the disparity of education that our children are going to receive, we need to make sure that we are partnering with the school board to ensure that they are giving us outcomes for the funds that we are providing to the schools. We need to make sure that it's making an impact. And so there, I could go on and on about the different opportunities here, but I'll stop because Hunter's looking at that clock hard. Thank you.
You know me too well, Katrina. Thanks. That, that wraps up the questions from the legislative committee, and we have several from the public at large. And Mr. Shanks will begin with you on the first question, which is, "What experience do you have that qualifies you to create and maintain a comprehensive multimillion-dollar budget?" And you will still need to unmute.
I have, you know, there are not many people that come along that have that qualification by nature. One of the things that I have is twelve years' experience at dealing with such a budget, but let me just back off of that for a moment. The, I have spent my entire, well, thirty-three years as a business owner. And yes, it's a small business, but it's the same principles that you have to, you have to live within the means of your, of your income. And that's the same case with the state, the city budget. Need to be mindful of the citizenry as to the types of taxes that they're being charged, and what services they're receiving, and, and we need to be very careful when we decide to raise taxes. And I, I regretfully have been in a position over the last, well, I've been on council for twelve years, there've been several times I've had to vote for a tax increase, which is the hardest thing, one of the hardest things that I can do, for me to do. But I, with regard to qualifications, you know, thirty-three years of experience in small business, having worked with several boards and commissions, the Danville, Pittsman County Regional Facilities, Industrial Facilities Authority for twelve, twelve years, the Danville Utility Commission for ten years, ten or eleven years. I've, I've been exposed to a lot of the budget writing in the city. I know from experience where the little widgets are that shouldn't be there and need to be, try to dissect them and remove them for the budget. But I, I guess the experience really comes from the twelve years I've had on city council, the twelve years prior to that, that I had on the planning commission.
Thank you, Fred. And Katrina, it is now your turn to respond.
On a daily basis, I am the president and CEO for a multimillion-dollar nonprofit organization. I have to answer to the federal government, the state government, and local governments. I oversee funding for three counties in Virginia, Halifax, Mecklenburg, and Charlotte County. So I know how to balance our budget. I know how to get innovative when we have needs but no money, how we partner with other organizations to ensure that we are able to carry out the duties that we want to carry out. And sometimes, unfortunately, there are things that we just can't do because the budget won't allow it. And so I bring a myriad of experience in developing budgets, working with government agencies, working with different councils. I have to work with the Board of Supervisors in three different counties. And so this would be my fourth board that I would be working with government. And so, yeah, I have plenty of experience doing this. I do this on a daily basis.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Hood, it is your turn to respond.
Okay. The beauty of this is, the fact that council is a collective. No, I don't have experience in budget, a million-dollar budget, but I've worked small businesses my entire life, one being a multimillion-dollar small business with Dan Valley Foods. So I've watched the effects of revenue coming in. I've watched the effect of things being slow. I've watched the effect of things going in red, as well as the black. Again, the beauty of what I'm doing is, being collective with council, you're gonna have strong suits from all areas. So where I may lack at that area, I'll show strength in others. One thing about it, I'm a fast learner and a fast listener. Another thing that I do know is people, and that's the main thing that we're looking at right here. So understanding that budget and managing that budget, that will definitely come, but we have to have transparency and honesty first. So, no, I do not have the experience of managing a budget of a million-dollar company, but I've seen a million-dollar company manage their budgets.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of questions that I really want to get to, and make sure that we get there. I'm gonna ask that you curtail your responses to two minutes each for the next couple of questions. Ms. Carter will begin with you. How will you address the anti-racism movement while you were in office?
How do I address the anti-racism? It's funny you ask, because I actually was just placed on the National Board for Racism, the Virginia Community Action Partnership. I am on that board, and I actually chair for the state of Virginia, the Equality Racism Board for Community Action Partnerships throughout Virginia. I'm also, my master's degree is in Training and Development, and so I do a lot of work around implicit bias. And I think one of the ways that we start to get rid of racism is by simply having some conversations. Oftentimes, we stand on separate sides of the room and shout at each other, rather than coming to the middle and let's have a conversation. And I think we really do have to look at it in Danville. We do have pockets of racism. We all know that it is very evident in the city that there are some pockets that do not have the best for all citizens. But I look at all citizens as bringing value to the table. I celebrate everyone's ethnicity. I think it just makes us that much stronger when we have diversity in all rooms. And we're not just talking about racial. We also need to talk about male and female.
Thank you very much. Brian Hood, you are next.
All right. For those who know me throughout the community, know I've been able to reach across all races. And that's been my strong suit. Again, I know people. I'm for people, as opposed to politics. So I've been able to be in rooms with everyone. I've been able to break bread with everyone, been able to engage in everyone. I think the main thing we have to understand with racism is just the actual core, what racism is. So if you go to racism, racism is, to me, the unknown, because I've had a situation prior to where a gentleman and I were engaged in a conversation. The racist part came up, and as he began to be a little more agitated with what's going on, I refrained from it. So by not speaking to him a couple of days, he came back. He said something that was key to me. He said, "Listen, you're not speaking to me," but we were speaking and we were friends prior to this. He said, "I don't look at you as black. I look at you as hood." So what that told me right there, when people be familiar with one another and know each other, racism tends to go out the door. And that's where people have to get a better understanding of each other, because that's- And that's where people have to get a better understanding of each other because that's, to me, racism comes like things that, what you don't know, you fear the unknown. So when you're unfamiliar with someone, that can work. But continuously doing events throughout the city that unite, I've been a uniter. I'm a unifier. Continuous bringing situations there will help. That's also why I want to bring people, more people in different areas that may not see eye to eye or may not be on the same page, bring them to council. They need a champion that could go out there and get them involved. Once they get involved, you'll close that barrier because you have a better understanding when you truly understand.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Shanks, it is now your turn to respond.
Thank you very much. I apologize. No, I think there is, there's not a racial problem in the city of Danville. I think that this past spring has shown how good relationships are with regard to racism through the peaceful protests that were held both on the courthouse and on Martin Luther King Bridge. I, I believe as a person that as long as you respect each other and you live by Christian values, there should not be racism intact. And I think personally, I hold the door open for any woman going into the grocery store. And I think anybody that, that believes in that and follows the Christian values will live a life of peaceful relationships. And that's what we all need to do. We need to respect each other as people, as individuals, and continue to work together. I think Danville does a very good job of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hood will begin with you on the next question, which is, what is your stance on funding for law enforcement agencies? Specifically, are you in favor of funding the needs of law enforcement as determined by trained law enforcement professionals and government officials? Or are you in favor of reducing funding for law enforcement?
I am not in support of reducing funding. I feel like, again, public safety is the key to growth throughout any city. Only cities will come stronger with stronger public safety. As far as funding, if we sit back and you examine and break down exactly where the funds are going and what strengths and weaknesses the funding places and implement, where it's implemented at, then you could kind of move forward from there. I do not see a necessary reasoning for defunding the police unless it's something that they can move to only add to public safety and move to only add to better race relations and add to better, better safety and trust within the police department. I trust our chief Booth with everything and every direction he's gone with things because he's shown community policing works. So I'm in support of not defunding the police.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. And Mr. Shanks?
Yes, sir. Would you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. What is your stance on funding for law enforcement agencies? Specifically, are you in favor of funding the needs of law enforcement as determined by trained law enforcement professionals and government officials? Or are you in favor of reducing funding for law enforcement?
Okay. Thank you. I'm adamantly in favor of listening to the professionals, the administrative government officials and the law enforcement officers in the budget requests that they make. I think there's room on the team to have a diversified background within the team of people that are funding and asking for funds. However, there's no question in my mind, I'm not, I am opposed to decreasing funding for law enforcement.
Thank you. And Ms. Carter?
I think our police, along with our teachers, are underpaid. Let's start there. I don't think that we need to take funding away. We need, we are blessed in Danville that we have not had any of the incidents that have happened nationally. And I think training is the difference. And so I already told you, I have a master's degree in training. So you know, I want people trained. I want people trained so that they're able to execute the job that they are going to do. And it is in that training, it is having the opportunity to go through that training that makes officers capable, when they're on the street, to be able to engage with citizens. My hats off to Chief Booth, hats off to Sheriff Mandul. They're doing a fantastic job in light of all of the obstacles that are in their way. They continue to go forward and the chief bringing the police into the community and asking the community, what do you think we need in our new police officers? So there are some wonderful things happening there as well. And so, no, I don't think we need to take any funding away. I think we need to really honor them.
Thank you very much. We're almost out of time, and so I'm going to give each of you one minute to make a final statement or plea to the voters, as it may be. And we will begin with Mr. Shanks, followed by Ms. Carter, followed by Mr. Hood.
Thank you. Before you start the clock, I was under the impression we had three minutes. I'm going to have to be, try to shorten this thing up here.
Please be judicious. I just, I want to respect the time of our listeners. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening and I want to thank the chamber for providing this forum. I'll be brief. I'm Fred Shanks. Now I'm asking for one vote, November 3rd, for the only open position for Danville City Council. Are you aware of those currently, aware of those who are currently on city council? I'm sure you're familiar with their backgrounds. Entirely different set of attributes to the table. And I'm asking you to consider the importance of having different viewpoints at the table. As far as, I have a great deal more to say, but I think that's the biggest thing. There needs to be diversity at the, at the table of the nine gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen that serve on city council. I think I bring a specific set of attributes that are unique to this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. And to all the candidates, thank you for adjusting your previously scheduled comments. So with that, Ms. Carter, it's your turn for one minute.
Well, thank you, Fred Shanks. I totally agree. We definitely need diversity at city council, and I think I bring that wholeheartedly. So I stand before you not only as your next prospective councilwoman, but also as a mother who knows the struggle of raising a family, only to see your children grow up and move away to find jobs that offer competitive wages. All of my children graduated from George Washington High School. Most of them went on to graduate from colleges and universities across the country, including Virginia Commonwealth University, Spelman College, Illinois Institute of Technology, and Harvard University. The solid foundation they received in education here in Danville catapulted them to success. But when they graduated over fifteen years ago, the downtown area was a ghost town. Dan River Mills was near enclosure and the view was pretty bleak. Fast forward fifteen years and things are looking very bright. Our downtown has come to life and we are looking for expansions across the city. This is not time to go backwards. We must continue to move Danville forward together. I am Katrina Carter. I am the person that can help you move it forward, and today I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Katrina. And Brian, you get to conclude.
Okay. Danville, we have a unique opportunity come November the 3rd, and that opportunity is bring a different perspective to council. I could have went on about what boards I may serve on or what attributes I've delivered throughout the city. The thing with me is, if you go into these communities, and I've touched each community in this city, they'll give you a perspective of what I've done. I don't always have to put things out in the forefront for what I do, but I need to make certain that people understand exactly what I do. So ask around. They'll tell you. We need an innovative voice. We have a different perspective to bring to council because I want to come as a blue-collar worker for citizens who may, you know, have shortened, shortened bills, bill money, shortened bills money at the end of the month, to understand that, who may have different doctor bills to pay and can't afford to do that, who may be in single-parent homes, who may have mortgages that are due, who feel that they're not included and involved in what's going on. I am a uniter. I've been a uniter across race barriers, age, creed, and color. So on that day, on that note, let me learn with you. Let me share with you. Let me go with city council, collectively understand what's going on, and bring that voice and opinion. Again, I'm a solution solver, I'm a fast learner and a great listener, and I listen for you because it's people, not politics. So November the 3rd, I ask for your one vote for Danville City Council.
Thank you, Brian, very much. I personally want to thank all three of you for being so well-prepared and for the insightful responses that you gave us. It's a unique circumstance for the city of Danville to have three people who obviously have spent a lot of time preparing and coming, coming tonight to answer these questions for the voters that are out there. On behalf of the chamber, I want to thank everybody that logged in tonight and that is watching on Facebook Live. And this will be reported at the chamber's website. Alexis, did you have anything that you wanted to conclude with?
I would just reiterate your thanks to our attendees and most of all to our candidates. Thank you for your ongoing service to our community, and it's just been wonderful to have you. Have a great evening.